Okay, good evening. At six thirty, we call the order, meeting number eighteen fifty-one. The East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. We are live at Scout Hall as well as via Zoom media platform. We have a forum. We have four regular members as well as one alternate. Frank, I'm going to ask you to end tonight on any votes that may take place. Thank you. Under added agenda items, we have one. It's going to be a discussion on one thirty-seven Scantic on a subdivision. Public participation, I'm sorry, legal notice. There is a legal notice. The East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, at six thirty. Details regarding how to attend will be published on the commission's agenda and will be made available on the town's website. It's PZ twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. The applicant is Town of East Windsor, is requesting a text amendment to zoning regulations, section six oh one point two and nine hundred point three. Full copy of the application is available on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage of the town's website. All interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments regarding this application. This was published in the Journal Inquirer on May twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. Now we are at the public participation portion of our meeting. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, hearing none. Is there anyone online that would like to speak on any topic that is not on tonight's agenda? Hearing none. We continue. Do approval of minutes? We have the minutes of May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, regular meeting minutes. Does anyone have any questions, comments, alterations, amendments? Okay, nobody has any comments, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve meeting minutes from number nineteen eighteen fifty, Tuesday, May ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, as presented.
There's a motion on the table to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second right there. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, and the receipt of applications. We have two applications to receive tonight. We have PZ twenty twenty-three dash seventeen, text amendment proposing text changes to zoning regulations, section five oh two, permitted accessory uses. Use table B one, B two, M one, H I Z, and T Z five zone. We also have application PZ twenty twenty-three dash eighteen, Town of East Windsor text amendment, text change to zoning regulations, sections four oh five, temporary events. Both of these will be heard at a later meeting. We have nothing under performance bonds or actions, no completed public hearings. So we now have a new public hearing. It's PZ twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, Town of East Windsor text amendment for text change to zoning regulations, section six oh one point two, number of parking spaces, and section nine hundred point three, site plan modification. The applicant is Town of East Windsor.
These changes are being recommended in lieu or in light of a recent request for, request for clarification on the use of millings, asphalt millings in the place of bituminous concrete. So we wanted to clarify the regulations. And the, if you have a newer version, they added, based on comments, an additional requirement down below. But what we've changed is all parking spaces, loading facilities, and access roadways shall be paved with bituminous asphalt or bituminous concrete to provide an adequate all-weather service. Just to be clear, so that the definition of an adequate all-weather service doesn't get misinterpreted there. And then we wanted to say we would allow the use of pervious pavement such as a millings by way of a special permit with conditions. And those conditions are outlined down under L one through six. Where we have the first twenty-five feet of the site access drive, we pay with bituminous asphalt or bituminous concrete, that the design has provided adequate protection from sedimentation and to meet the criteria of six oh one point six and six oh four point two. A maintenance plan has been prepared to show how the site will be maintained, including striping for site circulation and parking, snow removal, dust mitigation, anti-tracking measures, and maintenance of onsite drainage structures as applicable. We've added in that all ADA required parking areas and walkways shall be constructed by bituminous concrete. And then we had a requirement for a statement to be included on the plan, so that should the use change, you may require, be required to come in for reassessment as to whether the millings are appropriate. And the uses, where you can use the millings would be limited to, and we have a list of warehousing and distribution of non-hazardous materials, contractors, office and storage yard, volume reduction facilities, composting, mulching, wood chipping facilities, inventory holding areas, commercial recreation, farm and agriculture. I did get some feedback from the building official who felt that the warehousing and distribution use may not lend itself to millings. So. Wanted to share that.
Anybody have any comments to make?
No, I think this kind of closes up a loophole, but I agree with the building official, warehousing and distribution. Probably not a good place for millings. Kind of for storage, yes. Urban maintenance, yes, farm, obviously. So how do we take that out?
We can just, just line, just start the lineup?
I think I'm loading it.
In our motion.
And I just want to say, I think one of the reasons we included it is because of the project, the address is escaping me, that we just approved. Just, just the last meeting.
Yeah.
Because that is a non-paved property. I think that's why I went in. I'm not saying change the approach. I just, I think that's why it was included, because we were talking about it at the same time.
Well, is there, is there a provision in here that anyone else could petition under, under the special use permit? If they feel that they, you know, they have the, the right fit for such a change? So I mean, these, these are the ones that, you know, can be approved at staff level, and if anybody wants to petition, we have the commission for an alternate use. They have the right to.
So add a seven.
Add a number seven. All, all other uses, how, how we want to word this. Would require a, a, a definition or something like that? Or they require approval of the commission?
So I have other uses, other uses not included in number six above, maybe petition to the commission by way of a special use permit?
Okay.
What use is what, on number six?
Number seven. Other uses not listed in number six? Maybe petitioned.
Well, the, so the number one is, is by special permit. It's, those are coming in as a special permit.
Okay, so there's nothing that can be approved at staff level. All of it's.
Right, because this is effectively a waiver, and we can't.
I mean, I just, just think that, how can we put something in? So somebody reads and say, my use isn't here, they still feel that they're a right fit.
Well, how about we just say, we just strike the, by way of a special use permit, so it's not circular. But number seven, other uses not included in number six, maybe petition to the commission.
Are you guys in agreement with that? Want to hear?
So for number.
Petition?
Any use not specified? You mean?
Yeah.
I think if you're going to do that, then I would just take the list of uses right out and just say, special per, that the, an applicant can make a request by a special permit demonstrating the following criteria, and just don't tie it to a use. Because if, if it's, if we're not going to limit it to the uses listed, and someone else can petition, then, right, it really just comes down, when we were talking about this, the reason I put those in there frankly was just because you want to weed out someone coming to you saying, I want to, I, I don't want to pave because I've determined it's too expensive. Because that's what will happen. And so you have to be willing to tell them, no, if we don't put a list.
Then they would still have an avenue by going to the zoning Board of Appeals then?
They would need to demonstrate hardship, and it can't be financial.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
They come in by way of a special permit and they don't get approved by the commission, then they have to appeal to, to.
But I understand Mike's point that, you know, we don't want every single applicant trying this avenue just to keep it, you know, lower cost, so.
And the initial criteria, one, two, and three, really comes from kind of how they do it closer to the shoreline, where they do, they are more open to non-paved areas because of drainage and flood zone. I, as the person without a vote, my suggestion would be not to overthink the initial version.
Strike number seven and let it go as it is.
I mean, you're giving up a significant, you're giving significant flexibility to several uses by even entertaining, not allowing it be paved, not making it to be paved. And it's been on the books for how many years as it is now?
That is.
You guys in agreement with that?
No, number seven.
No, number seven.
Are we striking the warehousing or not?
Um, I, I, my opinion is I would. Especially the billing officials not supportive of it either, and my opinion is warehousing tends to lead to fork with traffic, heavier load, heavier turning equipment may, may not be very conducive to this type of norms. Anybody else has a, anything on it?
My only concern is, once I can work out the total, stone forty, you've got to consider the deals that have been rocks and bricks. They're going to use a mop with tires that may just tear up that pavement wherever you have a millings. It's easier for the owner to repair it, maintain it than it is to have perfectly smooth pavement and he's going to tear it up, patch it.
That sounds to me more like it's an inventory holding than a warehouse.
Would you, like, Mowley Mason would be considered inventory holding, so that.
Could, could be.
Currently in our regulations, the inventory holding is defined as the automobile.
Automobiles, okay, so those, well, so then mulch is the only, but like, we did talk about the volume deduction, which then, now, concrete and all the other products there too. I, I guess, I can see both sides. Anyone, anything that comes before us, we, we can, we have to review anything.
Right.
Okay.
Giving it?
Leave it alone, as it says here. Okay. Any other discussions? So this is a public hearing. Is anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Is there anyone online that would like to comment on this application? Nobody has any other questions? I entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing, PZ twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, Town of East Windsor text amendment for text change in zoning regulations, sections so one dash two, number parking spaces, except in nine hundred dot three, site plan modification, applicant.
Make a motion to close the public hearing on the table. Is there a second?
Second.
Second right there. Any other discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, public hearing is closed. Do we feel comfortable? We have enough information to make a vote on this?
Yeah.
Okay. Then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the text amendment to section six oh one dash two, parking lot design, and nine hundred dot, dash three, site plan application of the East Windsor zoning regulations as detailed in application PZ twenty twenty-three dash fourteen of the Town of East Windsor, last modified on May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, finding that the change recommended provides clarity. Will we have part of?
I think.
Yeah. And requirements for parking lot design and sure public safety.
There's a motion to approve the amendment change. Is there a second?
Second.
Second right there. Any other further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. New business. We have PZ twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, ten Prospect Hill Terrace, true storage, site plan modification, proposing twenty-four hour drive-up storage units for twenty-four thousand square feet within the existing parking lot and site improvements. The applicant is True Storage and Josh Sullivan. Who is here to speak on their behalf?
Uh, this is Jason Wiman from the Beta Group. Can you hear me and see me on the screen?
Yes, we can, sir.
You can, excellent. Um, great. So I'll be, I'll be introducing the project. I also have with me today Josh Sullivan from True Storage to assist with any questions that you might have on the application itself. Um, so what I'd like to do really quick is just give a little bit of a background of, of where we are, how the project has come to, uh, to be as of today. So exactly a year ago, we had come in front of the commission for a site plan application to convert the former Burlington Coat Factory at ten Prospect Hill Terrace into an indoor climate-controlled, uh, storage facility. So that, that application has been approved. The ownership has been turned over from Burlington Coat Factory to True Storage late two thousand and twenty-two. Um, and the construction had moved forward during that time, and I believe at the start of this year, they are done construction and they had started operation for the building conversion itself. So this application is a site plan modification to that same site. Um, what I'll do is I'll share my screen just to give you a little background of where the site is, if I can do that. Just give me one second. All right, can you see my screen?
Yes, sir.
All right. So this is a Google image of where the site is. So the parcel actually straddles the, the town line with Enfield and East Windsor. The site is located between ninety-one and Route Five, just north of Route one forty. Um, you can see it on the screen here. Oops, sorry about that. So this is approximately, the site itself is approximately a little over ten acres in total. Uh, the portion of the site that's within East Windsor is five point seven acres, uh, on the south side of the image here. Um, so as of today, just as reviewed, the building itself has been renovated. There had been some minor modifications done to the parking lot. Those improvements include, um, some million overlay of the existing pavement, as well as some parking lot striping uh, for ADA improvements, as well as, um, a new waterline installed at the back of the building to satisfy, satisfy, uh, the fire marshal's comments. So what I'd like to present now is, um, what we are intending, or what we're calling basically phase two, um, which is basically, uh, proposing, uh, drive-up storage units, um, within the existing parking lot, um, on the East Windsor parcel. So what you see on the screen is a, is our title sheet of the plans that we had submitted to the P and C department. Um, below you'll see some of the images prior to, um, True Storage owning the Burlington Coat Factory. Um, it's a lot of deteriorated, deteriorated pavement, uh, which has changed since, uh, they had acquired the site. Like I said, it has been milled and overlaid and striped. The image at the top shows some of the three D renderings of what the onsite storage buildings will look like. Uh, I believe there's approximately a hundred and sixteen to eighteen units being proposed on the site. Um, a lot, and they're all single-story, drive-up. They are not climate-controlled. Uh, they have overhead doors, roll-up doors. Uh, they also have, um, lighting on, on the external faces of the buildings. Um, and I'll get into the details in, uh, in just a second. So I'd like to move on to the site plan itself, which may or may not be easy to see on your end. Um, and I'll zoom in a bit. Um, so as I mentioned before, we're proposing a hundred and twelve, um, ten by twenty units. In addition to that, we have four smaller units that are about ten by fifteen in size. Again, these are all located within the East Windsor parcel of the site. Uh, most of this, most of the units are, are proposed on the west side of the building. Uh, we are not proposing any improvements at the rear of the building or the side of the building, nor are we proposing any improvements on the Enfield parcel, um, of, of the site itself. So you'll notice that, um, all of the storage units on the site are proposed within the existing, um, impervious, uh, areas of the parking lot. So these were paved areas that have been, um, either modified or, or, um, or changed to accommodate, uh, several rows of drive-up storage units. So we, as you can see at the bottom of the screen, we have, uh, several drive aisles in between these units. So we have, uh, basically four drive aisles, um, for the cluster that's at the main entrance. We also have some supplemental units at the west side of the building. Um, another fifteen units, um, over there as well. So with these improvements, um, we did have to consider modifying some of the drainage system, um, on site, only because uh, several of the existing drainage pipes on the site were located underneath some of the proposed buildings. So again, we were going to go ahead and relocate those structures, relocate those pipes within the drive aisles to properly convey the stormwater, um, on site. While I'm talking about stormwater, um, while we're talking about, you know, peak flows and stormwater, uh, improvements, we actually have a reduction of impervious area on the site. I believe, um, it's close to, uh, eight thousand to nine thousand square feet that'll be converted that was impervious to some sort of pervious surface, that being either something that's landscaped or vegetated. Now that we're talking about that, you'll notice that not, that you can see some areas of the site that were, have not been utilized for drive-up storage units. Uh, the reason for that is that we do have two existing waterline easements that, that extend from Prospect Hill Terrace to the building. One of them is diagonally on the, the southeast, I mean, yeah, the south, the southeast corner of the site. The other one is on the eastern side of the site, adjacent to the, um, the smaller units that are proposed on the eastern side of the existing building. Um, those are locations we could not propose building on, buildings on top of. These are also areas that we did not introduce any, um, large amounts of landscaping in the form of either large trees or roots or something that would either encroach to, into or impede upon the existing waterline that, that is existing on site today. Um, so with that, that's, that's pretty much it, um, as a, as an overview. I know that we had originally submitted the site plan application on May second. Um, that application did, um, go under review, um, from, for your, for, for your commission. We did receive comments last week on some of these issues, which we have addressed and reissued site plans to you. Uh, I believe digitally we had submitted them yesterday, and then you should have received hard copies today, which is what I'm presenting on this, on the screen in front of you today. Um, I can pause for a second to, to, to take any comments, or uh, we could jump into how we anticipate on addressing the comments that we have received from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Let's see, go ahead and address the comments, and then we'll have questions after.
Sure. So I'll jump into that now. Excellent. So up on my screen, this is, these are the comments that we have received. I'll go through them pretty quickly. So from the Inland Wands Commission, um, this was reviewed. Uh, the, uh, the commission, uh, the inland commission did not have any comments as, um, you know, the a hundred and fifty-foot upland review area, um, was not within any of our proposed improvements, so we did not receive any comments from that, so there's no action there. There was a comment on the front yard setback from Prospect Hill Terrace. Um, originally on our plan, we had a twenty-foot side yard, um, setback from Prospect Hill from the cul-de-sac. That has since been revised to be sixty feet and not twenty feet. So that impacted a couple of the units. Uh, we had removed, I believe, six to eight units to comply with the buildings not being within that sixty-foot offset. So we actually have a little bit of a reduction in the amount of square footage that we're proposing for this project. Rather than being twenty-four thousand square feet, I believe we're at twenty-two thousand and four hundred square feet to accommodate for the removal of those, of those couple of units. Photometrics Plan, um, this was a comment that we had received. Um, I am under the, under, um, yeah, under the impression that this is currently being worked on. I know, um, Josh Sullivan is on the phone or on the call with us today. He can elaborate a little bit more on the progress of that plan and when he thinks that that might be, uh, submitted. Josh, you there?
Yep, I'm here. Thanks, Jason. Um, as you mentioned, we are working on the photometric, um, plan as we speak. For the most part, we are utilizing the existing lighting that's on site. Um, we are upgrading and replacing, as we discussed in the first round, from the interior, you know, bit up, um, to make them more efficient in LED. But in terms of new proposed lighting for this phase two, the only thing that is being proposed, which again, we'll show on the photometric, are downward-facing wall pack lighting. Yeah, if you see that first rendering, you can see them there above the doors. Um, so they have a, a screen on the top. They are completely downward-facing and, you know, put off very little light that can be leaked, um, beyond the parcel, and, you know, we have a good amount of coverage there. So we will send a photometric plan as soon as it's ready, should be just a few more days. I don't expect it'll, uh, yield, you know, any opinions that'll change anything, but we'll, we'll provide staff with that so they can review and make sure it's compliant with, with the code.
Excellent. Josh, while I still have you, some of these other comments relate to some of the architectural elements of the building. You might just want to touch upon the comment that we received for the roof, uh, color as well as the facade for some of those buildings.
Yep. So, um, we, we went ahead and then adjusted those, you know, to, to comply with, with the comment made. Um, the reason we do have some of the doors on, on the end is, is for access as well as aesthetic, so people can see they're for storage. Um, but all of the adjustments should be compliant with, with the comments made.
Yeah, and that also includes the. Yeah, and that also includes the stormwater comment made about reducing the temperature of the stormwater runoff generated by the proposed buildings. I believe originally we had proposed probably a dark color, something black or similar. So that has since been changed to a white color to appease this comment. And then lastly, it was a landscaping comment, which is in accordance with Section six hundred point one. So we have been asked to include either landscaping and plantings on portions of the site that are not going to be covered by impervious area. These include spaces in between buildings five and six and seven. So we have a landscape architect that took a look at producing a landscaping plan. We did look at all of the opportunities that we could to introduce any kind of landscaping that was, you know, aesthetically pleasing, but cost-effective. And as I mentioned before, we did not want to introduce any landscaping elements such as shrubs, trees, evergreens, anything with a hard root system that could potentially impact the existing waterlines on the site. So you'll notice that the areas between, you know, buildings five and six and to the north where the waterline easement is, that we are proposing turf in those areas, so it will be grass. It's not going to be pavement. So those will be maintained as grass. But the areas that we had focused on that would include landscaping was in the front of the first aisle, as well as at the southeast corner of the parcel, where we're removing some bituminous pavement for parking that we don't know, that we no longer need, and we're doing some grading there. And then we also took the opportunity to introduce some smaller shrubs and trees and mulch on the eastern portion of the site, in the location where we're proposing the fifteen storage units. So those are the three opportunities that we thought was the best areas to go ahead and introduce plants and mulch for aesthetic reasons, as well as making sure that people don't drive over those areas in the wintertime and they adhere to the curbing that's been laid out on the site. So I believe those were the only comments that we had received. The only outstanding comment that we have is the Photometrics Plan, which True Storage is working on. As far as everything else, I believe that we've addressed everything that had been a concern from the Commission itself.
Has the, why is a lot of this question been answered about the turning radius of twenty-six feet?
Oh, yes. So there, we did receive another comment about the turning radius, specifically this maneuver on the southeast corner of the site. I believe originally when we submitted the application, that radii was close, but it was slightly smaller at twenty-two feet, I believe. The request was that that radii be modified to be twenty-six feet. So even though it's not labeled here, this radii does, in fact, meet the twenty-six-foot radii requirement from the Fire Marshal.
Are you ready for questions now, or you have more of your presentation?
I don't have anything else to add unless somebody else has any specific questions regarding, you know, the site or the buildings themselves.
All right, Jim, we'll start with you.
Since this is going to be open to the public, is there going to be a gate on the entrance way coming in? Or anybody that's driving there?
Josh, I believe the site is going to be open, what, is it twenty-four hours, the facility?
No, it is not twenty-four hours, so we are not proposing a gate for that reason. You know, it's, they are completely secured buildings, other than the customer, and we have vast amounts of security onsite due to the nature of just being storage. We kind of go above and beyond and place interior and exterior cameras at every corner we can. So it is a monitored site with restricted hours, so people can't come here late at night, middle of the night, early morning, nothing like that.
Well, they probably will. Most of these storage facilities places have a gate, just so they're in a code, so they know who comes and who goes. I mean, I know there's a couple of storage facilities that have been hit recently when they busted like forty lots or fifty lots and ransacked the place. So I, but.
Oh, sorry. I was just going to say, if that's the will of the board and you guys would like us to add that, we're open to that. We have done that other jurisdictions where it's a requirement. We typically don't prefer it, but of course, if that's your concern and like us to add it, we can do that.
Well, you're stating that you're not going to be open twenty-four hours, but especially with the outside storage areas, if you don't have any kind of physical barriers, what's going to prevent people from going to these units at any hour of the night?
Right. There is no physical barrier, so theoretically, one could, even though it's not allowed, but correct. So again, if it's your will, we'd be happy to add that for security reasons.
And also, you said the color units are going to be white, is that what you said, for the outside ones?
The roof, I believe, right? And the outside?
Correct. It's more of a gray on the roof, but correct, yep.
Put it on the last page.
And actually, no, I did actually tour your facility inside, and the path would be beautiful, the way you guys did. Everything came out really organized.
Thank you. We appreciate that. We do go above and beyond with, you know, that vinyl plank flooring, which I'm sure you noticed, little things that, like that, that you might not see at other facilities, but we try to keep it as top of the line as we can.
Yeah, you stripped out the whole building, and I noticed you guys did a lot of other stuff inside, like the wood floor, and like you said, and the lighting was nice, it was all motion light censored and came out really good.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Dave, you have any questions?
I don't.
No. Jason.
Breaks up.
Yeah. Okay, I have just a couple of questions. The grass area that you proposed between the buildings, you think the curb that you have in your details will be adequate to prevent people from parking on top of it? Because somebody's coming to their storage unit, they may have a tendency, rather than being in the drive aisle, to pull up onto the lawn.
Yeah, the thing is that, well, I mean, what I would say first is that there are other opportunities on the site for people to park. If you'll notice, down, down in the south corner of the building, there are parking spaces down here. There are also parking spaces, existing parking spaces along the, the, the east side of the units, as well as all along the front of the building. You know, I was told that, you know, there's very few or minimum traffic that comes through here per hour. So, you know, we believe that there's enough peripheral parking that people can utilize, rather than parking up onto the grass. Most people will park pretty much right in front of their unit temporarily to go ahead and unload. That's the reason why we're providing twenty-four-foot wide drive aisle, so you at least have the opportunity to pass a vehicle if you do have someone stopped who happens to be unloading. I don't know if there's ever been any history with people parking or driving up on top of the two-minute curves in order to unload, but I'll let Josh speak to that.
That's, thank you, Jason, and that's exactly what I was going to mention. I was trying to think of our closest facility. We had one in Bourne, Massachusetts, very similar situation, a converted former stop-and-shop existing structure with a large parking lot that we did, drive-up buildings as well, and it had the same curving, and it was never an issue for us. Like Jason said, the vehicular traffic here is very, very low, so, you know, for three or four people with units next to each other to all be there at the same time and force someone up at the curb just would never happen. Typically, they'll pull right out front, unload their stuff, and, you know, be on their way or park in a nearby spot.
What about the snow removal? Where are you going to push all the snow to?
Well, the snow, well, I don't know how the site is maintained right now, but there, so the site itself is, it's almost three-quarters impervious area. I know from what I've seen in the past, I know that there's been a lot of, like, bituminous accumulation at the rear of the building. So the site pretty much drains from east to west to Bowen's Brook on the west-hand side. I have seen a bunch of, it almost looks like deteriorated pavement or rings of salt and sediment in the back. I would have to assume that any snow removal that occurs onsite would not be piled between the drive aisle. I would, I would think that it would be pretty much moved to the rear of the building where people are not parking. And then it still has the opportunity to, you know, melt and drain into the existing drainage system, which I believe is what they do today.
Yes, that's, right. That's my understanding of what occurred this past winter, and that would be our plan to continue that at the rear of the site where there's no parking or activity.
The last question I have is, your inside storage is pretty much active now or will be active at the time of construction. You're going to have to block off access to this area while it's under construction. Will you have adequate access for people to still gain their inside storage areas?
Yep, yep, absolutely. You know, that's a paramount concern of ours. You know, we don't want to hamstring our own customers either. So we will be maintaining all of the dedicated parking for existing customers in the existing structure to be able to enter and exit out of all existing egresses and parking areas. They won't be affected.
Okay. That's all I have. Anyone on staff have any questions that they would like to ask?
Me, they did a good job addressing the comments that we had. We're still waiting on the photometric plan. I can share that I did speak with the town planner of Enfield today, and she said that the town of Enfield will not be coming.
All right, if nobody has anything else, with the absence of the photometric plan, we're going to have to then continue this application. So I'll make a motion to continue the hearing until our next meeting.
I make a motion to continue EZ twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, ten Prospect Hill Terrace, True Storage Site Ham applications, both in twenty-four-hour drive-up storage units, twenty-four dollars per feet, within the existing parking lot and site improvements, applicant two storage, last call.
There's a motion to continue this application. Move to the second. Second, Dave. Any other discussion? During non-call for a vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. Unanimous, continue to our next meeting. Okay. Other business, we are going to address the added agenda item first. That is... Mr. James Giorgio has a request on a waiver of fee in lieu of sidewalks for a subdivision on one thirty-seventh South Grove. Not having the usual, so we'll try to.
I'm sorry. They all have the email with the pictures too.
Okay, good, because I actually brought the pictures too. Thank you very much. So I'm not here to discuss, you know, the definition of fee in lieu of. I understand the concept as a builder over twenty-five years. They wanted to tend to put on. Other times that I actually used the option was in other towns. I've never had to really do it here in Windsor, even though it's built over, close to a hundred homes here in town. First of all, my name is James Giorgio, forty Barber Hill Road for the record, Broadbrook. So when we initially came in front of the commission, I use the fee in lieu of, you know, as a sort of an option, but does it make sense to put sidewalks in? Doesn't, you know, what is the option that they have? And in other towns, it's always been, you know, a small fee, fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars a lot, you know, for your spot. And I thought that would be similar here. I didn't expect that when we were approved for the fee in lieu of, and we went and did the calculation, when we worked with the calculation, the fee came to sixty-four thousand dollars, which, as builders usually say, well, hell, I'll just put a sidewalk in. But it still doesn't make sense to put a sidewalk at that time. So we started looking at it, I spoke to Ruth immediately, I spoke to Len, and they said, well, you know, evaluate it, come back in front of the commission, you know, maybe ask for adoption, whatever it is. And the town's calculation is simple. It's linear feet times four feet wide times seventeen dollars a square foot. I've been out of towns, like you said, where they'll use a similar calculation, but then they'll, they'll take ten percent of it, twenty percent of it, thirty percent. Every town's different. There's no mandate on how it's done. As I stated earlier, most of the times I thought, just normal, because it's not intended to be more than what it would cost to build a cycle. And in this case, we happen to have, when we did the approval, we got the approval, there's nine hundred and fifty-four feet here. All right? This has actually been chopped off a little bit because this is now a rear lot, so we didn't need this for funding, you know that. But over the course of the next few months, you know, it was land out there during rainstorms and et cetera. If you're not familiar with this, there's a swale that comes all the way down. It stops pretty much here where there's a residence. There's two houses here, and then another hay field, and then another house. So its swale doesn't necessarily disappear, but the road still slopes into property. And then it goes upward, and the water sort of just settles there and starts to storm. In this case, the water comes down and actually hits this farm road that was, that's still there. And so the water comes down and it hits here and doesn't go anywhere else. It literally just backs up.
I thought that owner, sorry, I thought that owner put a pipe in.
We did.
But have you guys?
That was us right here.
No, no, there were one down.
Here?
Yeah.
Oh.
There's one down.
There's, there's not one here, and this is all wetlands here. So what happens is the water backs up. If you look at the site picture I showed you, which is looking north, you can see all the water back here. Okay? This water actually comes all the way back into here, and it sits there because it can't get through farm road. Now, even if we, so we talked to Len, we're like, listen, why don't we just put a pipe through the farm roads? The problem with that is that the flow line right now for the swale is about three feet down. From this farm road on, this topography stays the same. It's white. So the water comes here, it just sort of sits, then it absorbs over time, maybe a week or two or three. And it really depends on the soil condition. East Windsor is loaded with clay. So water, the clay tends to go up and down, not side to side. So the water sits here. So when the approvals came in, I even talked, because Joe raised the issue about, well, why don't we put a pipe in and cover the whole thing up? Put this whole swale out, put a pipe in, it's still draining water down here. That would require numerous storm drains to be put in all along the side of the road. So you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars here. Storm drainage, et cetera. The problem you still have is the storm drain might be lower than where the water needs to go. So when the water doesn't flow uphill, the water's got to get to the buttons. So without doing any major wetland renovation or like creating a whole, like, tension pond, this water is going nowhere, only via absorption. Now, the problem with that is that, so the option of fee in lieu of is you're either to build a sidewalk or you pay the fee. Well, I can't build a sidewalk here at all, so I don't have the option. And the reason for that is the swale, when you look at it, when you go down that road, the crown of the road thumps right to the edge of the road, and it continues down probably another, I'm going to say, five to ten feet of distance. So when you build a town standard sidewalk, you usually have a four or five-foot snowshoe, you have a four-foot sidewalk, and then another four or five feet for the right way. So that whole fifteen feet or so is your right way. The sidewalk in the snowshoe always tilts towards the curve, and it runs along the road. That's where you stop during the block. In this case, Len needs to keep that slope. So, because if we close that in, all this water that comes from Woolham Road all the way down is going to end up in the residence. All the way down is going to end up in the residence down here and it's a lot of water. So. The problem we have in talking with Ruth and Lynn is that we cannot build a sidewalk to a town standard. It would have to be either on a slope or it would be below water most of the time. Which will deteriorate and then just cause more maintenance issues. The other option was to put the sidewalk further in, well, then it's not a town sidewalk, it's a walking path, some property. So that's not an option. So I stand here. Just trying to apply common sense. That I understand the whole concept of being new was supportive. But in this case, sixty five thousand dollars of. All right. Even if you shrink it down and still use the same formula, you're at like thirty or forty thousand. So I still can build a sidewalk for us. And for me to put a sidewalk in, it just makes no sense anyway. If I could, because it's built over the entire scenic road and road sidewalk. There's no plan on putting a sidewalk in here. It's not going to connect any. So taking that, taking in the safety issues of building one that would be crooked. With not many town standards, would be below water most of the time, every time it rains or the weather melts. And. The fact that the town doesn't calculate it just on a flat fee, it's all done on the mathematical equation, it just doesn't make sense. So we're asking because we cannot, we don't have the option to do a sidewalk. The only option we have is the K and B, which is exorbitant. So we're asking to waive the sidewalk and the fee requirement for these three particular lots. Because it's just getting done. Right?
So, so I've been here a while. We never wait.
And I understand that. I mean, if it makes the commission, I mean, I was under the impression of all seriousness.
Looking at the proposal, we all knew that you weren't putting a sidewalk.
Yeah, so.
We all know the road, we all know the swamp and the front, it's wet, very wet. So we just figured you were going to pay the fee. I'll be like, calculate that fee is a price per square foot higher right now, sure it is.
Well, it is, but like, I know I can put, well, for instance, this sidewalk right here, forty feet. So right now this house is pretty much done and we're looking for a certificate of occupancy within the next thirty days and that's why we're here anyway. Because Ruth's like, listen, we need to resolve it. And we were just sort of waiting for, you know, a lot of different rainstorms to happen. We needed to see where the water was. And trust me, line type came up with multiple four rains. So this here, if you did the calculation of forty feet. All right, I mean, this is, this is, and this is the truth, we're doing this twenty five.
Yeah, I believe you.
So.
They could reduce it.
Twenty five, actually not a lot. So forty feet times four feet wide is a hundred and sixty square feet. Times seventeen dollars a square foot is twenty seven hundred dollars. Now, I really put that sidewalk forty feet for probably about fifty bucks. So why would I spend the twenty seven hundred? Because I have my own guy. It's not even, it's like three yards of concrete at a hundred and fifty dollars here. So it's nothing for us to do. It makes no sense. So now that's twenty seven hundred and twenty now. Like I said, when I initially, and even with my engineer, he did the rest because a lot of stuff. So I'm not here saying I don't want to pay anything. Three lots, forty five hundred dollars. I'm still willing to do a flat fee because I believe in the program, I do. Sidewalks in town, you're fair. Doing things like foot and foot, I said, but I certainly can build these. Normally do them, but say we're struggling, even though they make no sense. So I'm not looking, you know, like I said. You want a mandate of flat fee? I'm not object.
So if if we did any kind of free reduction, it wouldn't come from us. It'd have to come from Lynn. Correct or no?
The way the. This is what the condition that went into the approval says. A fee in lieu of installation of sidewalks shall be provided. The final amount shall be in accordance with section six point three five. And approved by the town engineer. So six point three five. Says fee in lieu of installation. Alternatively, the applicant may propose and the commission may accept that some or all of this requirement be met by making a payment. Of a fee in lieu of installing sidewalks or trails. To a town sidewalk and trail fund, provided that such payment is at least forty percent. Of the estimated cost of installing sidewalks in the development.
We need to do that probably in all seriousness.
If you go there, it means in your bubble, I'm not saying you, but with lots of purpose, I'm sure that consideration that would always went in front.
That wasn't even my concern. I figured that. Doing the. Before we put that driveway in, we knew we were blocking it. So by putting a pipe in, I figured the water would run still. But we discovered that the water doesn't rock. It just runs out of the dirt road and stops. So now there's no, there's no sense like to go in. That this past week, those sidewalks would have been probably forty.
And I agree, I agree.
Nothing should happen as far as sidewalks, changes well. It's got to collect water. So we'll manage the water to stay here somehow and and. We can talk to Ruth further about maybe doing something within the town to get that water to move into the wetlands where it needs to go. Well, you're talking wetlands approval, you're talking larger than what's allowed, right? Talking state review, you know.
Also be talking what's feasible, right? Like, does it make any sense? Maybe not.
Everything ends up being below where it already is. This driving across is no problem because we put a a pipe underneath it. The water, it's true, if the water's still sitting there, it doesn't work. The water's all gone, a lot here, but in this particular lot, it's still sort of sitting in the lots of. When they treat this place years ago, pop off the tree, they just created lots of, you know, brunnels and holes and everything. So the water just sort of sits there. The minute I clear this and smooth it all out, the water's going to actually flow a lot quicker. Means I'm not sure where it's going to go. So that's part of my concern. I'm not even sure I want to build it upstairs. Because I see what it does with the restriction, meaning to build a house and down here, you know, people have a house, that's not really. That's the first right use part.
Well, my opinion is, I think the next discussion has to be with Lenny. And to validate what you said, under normal construction circumstances. That the cost of construction should be this amount of money and then we can apply the forty percent to that number. Versus, you know, with your, you know, outstanding circumstances, the cost of construction is much higher.
It's huge.
And that's why.
I mean, even this calculation of sixty five thousand, we're not, it might cost more than that. By the time you deal with all the drainage and figure out how to put it in and still you end up with a sidewalk that. You know, and I know you hear this argument all the time, not here to say it's it's, I'm not here to say I don't want to take anything, but. Just the way the fee is right now is.
Well, that's, that's why I think it kind of relies on our town engineer to say, okay, this is, you know. You know, what you call, you know, acceptable circumstances where, you know, okay. There is no such thing as unbuildable. We can get the Army Corps of Engineers in here and we can build something for, you know, two point three million dollars. We can have the golden sidewalk. But, but is that, is that, you know, feasible? So I would hope that Lenny could give us a number to say, okay. This was flat level ground on sand, you know, form it and go, what did you cost to put a sidewalk in? And then we can apply the the forty percent rule and and there's your number.
Well, I was listening before he goes, oh, it's not a hardship to say, well, this is, this is extreme. It's like. Yeah, you got to pass that on being a builder. So you're talking sixty five grand all of a sudden, that one plus thousand dollars to the house. And, you know, there's price limits and cost limits. Run that whole situation too. So, all right.
So that's, that's our recommendation is that.
Forty percent of.
Of what Lenny, what it seems to be. The, what, under normal circumstances, what construction costs would be.
Now, does that need, does we have a restraining authority to make that decision or do I need to come back in here and? Have you guys understand what it is?
It sounds like that path is compliant with the condition of.
Yeah, right.
We don't usually get this at all.
Yeah, no. That's what it is. All right, thank you.
It's not the town's. So the next item we have is our Z E O report.
So Danielle has put together an update and she gave a little key at the bottom for her color coding. She's going to get rid of the red. Really, that on hold was waiting for the flight ordinance. So. And that's coming up for town meeting in June.
We have a date now?
Uh, I think I'd kind of be guessing. It's in the teens. You'll stay tuned. It'll be noticed, but the flight ordinance is posted now on the website so folks can. Look at it and review it prior to. See the fifteenth to the seventeenth. Do you know town meeting, June, is it fifteen, seventeen?
Here you laying, I'm surprised at that.
So there's some that have been on hold for a while. Danielle has gotten really great compliance with the car sweep.
Oh, good.
That she did. We have a couple of outstanding locations that. Uh, have citations and fines building up and we do now have a appointed Angelo Saravino. He is the hearing officer. It's been appointed and so there'll be some. Citation hearings happening on a couple of properties.
So the pink.
The pink.
That was going to be hopefully addressed by Blake and Walmart. What are the recourse, what are the action steps anybody can take for any of this stuff? Nothing?
Private matter, you know, we've been working on getting a tool and so we have, we have flight ordinance going at town meeting. Hopefully it'll pass. The current draft is. The focus and purpose has shifted to public safety and accommodating emergency response and. Inspections and the like. But when reports come in or complaints come in. We'll investigate and then if there's, it's probably going to be more on the.
Board of Health.
Building side of things or board of health.
You got three with tall grass.
Tall grass isn't going to cut it.
The increase in vermin and anything else that grows.
That's right. And that's the kind of advice that Danielle is giving folks when they call. You say you need vermin? Here's the number of the health department. So. Yeah, it's going well.
So under correspondence. We have a letter.
Yep, we had received an initial letter of an intent to file for a thirty one for all road. And just so folks know. I had sent our resolution that you came up with through the siding council. In relation to the for all road petition. So they have that, the siding council will have that. And since then. From citizens that are concerned with solar, there have been a couple other petitions for a public hearing. Uh, on this application. That have been submitted. So all those have been acknowledged by the siding council and. Will be reviewed and they'll determine whether or not they'll have a public hearing.
So they're not obligated to hold them.
I think they have to act on whether they will or not. But it seems like the volume of correspondence hitting them has to be palpable at this point. So I think. There'll be more heading that way.
When they're going to be rendering their decision on that, do you know?
Oh, they're just starting, so I don't know when, but I have the full petition. Folks want to look through it. Um, they do, it is online too at the siding council website. If you're interested in seeing.
Well, at least, I mean, hopefully if we get a hearing. Publicly voice on it.
No, I think it's the cumulative impact and just bringing that to the forefront as they're selecting, looking.
I can't remember what's the number, but I mean, we have got a, you know. Majority of the proposed sites in for the state, only it's the total percentage of we build everything that's under, under plan.
Our message is we've got our part.
Well, that's I think, I think, you know, I think that number was upwards of thirty, over thirty percent. For one town to shoulder all that.
Yep, so there's, there's. There's not cry happening at this point, so I think. We've got their attention.
Okay, more, more to come. Yeah, anything for business meeting?
No.
Only for an executive session, so. Anybody have anything else they'd like to bring up? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I made the motion I would adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn on the table. Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Meeting is adjourned at seven thirty eight.